Is going to be 6:35, public hearing for 26 Farquhar Road. Blanchard Family Trust, 6:45, public hearing, special for a special permit for 63 B. Ave. Shawn and Joanna Doyle, 6:55, another special permit for 72, 72A Paradise Lane. Robert and Lisa Muscaro, 7:05, public hearing, special permit, 88 South Shore Drive, for Stephen and Marcy Reed, 7:15, a determination for 88 McGargle Road, James and Darlene Yazinski, Town Planner, Old New Business. And we'll start by introducing ourselves, and we'll start with Marge.
Marge Coney.
Diane Chapasso.
Liz Banks.
Fidelis Songwebraker.
Tom Welch.
Okay, so next on the agenda will be the minutes from December 14th. Everybody have a chance to check them over? Any corrections or additions? Those two weren't here. So it's just us three.
I make a mo—
Did you have anything?
No, no, I was saying I was there.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of December 14th, 2022.
Second it?
Second it, yeah.
All right, all those in favor of accepting the minutes? Okay, so one, two, three.
Yeah, abstained.
Yeah, Marge and Tom abstained. Okay, first will be the Blanchards for special permit to rebuild the garage on a portion of an existing concrete pad.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, before we start—
Charlie, I have to read the legal notice. In accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Center Office Building located at 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, Massachusetts 01566, on Wednesday, February 15th, 2023, at 6:35, on the application of the Blanchard Family Trust. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Article 18, Section 300-18.2 (2) and a finding pursuant to Article 15, Section 300-15.2A of the zoning bylaw to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing non-conforming use or structure for the property located at 26 Farquhar Road. The applicant is proposing to rebuild a garage on a portion of an existing concrete pad as shown on the plans and documents provided. The concrete pad straddles the property line. Construction, as proposed, will maintain a two-feet side setback where 15 feet is required. Since construction will be on the existing pad, no new non-conformities will be intensified or created as a result of a proposed construction. The proposed request can be viewed at www.sturbridge.gov/zoningboardofappeals-pages/recentfilings or arrangements can be made to view the application packet by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at (508) 347-2508 or by email at jlacy@sturbridge.gov. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Members of the public may watch the meeting online via the town's demand video broadcast or via cable television on Channel 191. In the event of a remote hybrid meeting, notice will be posted on the ZBA website, and those who wish to participate will find specific information on how to access the meeting on the website. Please note that the meeting/haring will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Elizabeth Banks, Chair, Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, but even before you start, I'm gonna— We did receive information from Jane Boombah, the planning office, from the planning office, and also conservation. It appears to be in the buffer zone, and just to contact conservation, it would be administrative review. DPW added a sewer as built to help contractor and avoid conflicts. The proposed garage is detached from the fire department. Being that it is close to an exposure and detached from home, I recommend installation of a heat alarm in the garage capable of communicating with the main house in the event of a fire emergency. The building inspector was need as built after concrete pad is poured before construction. And Board of Health, no concerns. Now, you can give us your presentation.
Okay, great. And I did receive a copy of that, so thank you. I've got that information on the comments. So, yeah, so basically, it's pretty well, you know, described in the legal notice that was given. What we would like to do is to rebuild a garage on the existing pad, and again, as it said, we'd end up with a two-foot setback from the property line. The property line really runs down the middle of the driveway, and we do have an easement to use and to pack vehicles on that portion of the driveway that's actually on the abutting property. So, the, you know, I know that they indicated that we should have, you know, plans as well, and I think we provided some information on what the potential plans were. We haven't really chosen a design yet because we obviously didn't have the permit, so we weren't sure. And the original concept that I got from a contractor was to have a typical 24-by-24 garage, which, you know, sort of fits on the portion of the pad that's there. The pad would be extended over onto our property because the whole thing would have to move over away from where it is right now. The pad currently goes right up against the, pretty close to where that fence is. We have a fence between the property, and that pad goes right up to that fence. And so what we had, the idea would be to have something similar to this, because, you know, the idea would be to try to have it match the existing 1880 house. And this one here, for example, has a higher pitched roof. And talking to the contractor, he would recommend that we use the same pitch as on the house because we've got two peaks there, both with slate roofs, and they're both a 10 pitch. This is a 12. Then the other thing that came up, which I hadn't thought of before, was, this was one that I saw, and it actually comes out instead of being 24, it's really 28 feet because it has the door on the front. And that was another thing I was thinking, that if we were trying to, you know, make it fit well with the house, then if we actually had a 24-by-28 pad, the other four feet would go over toward the house, then it would look more consistent with the house because the house has an addition on this little kitchen L. that has a door that way, too. So the idea would be to have corner boards and placards, you know, the same as on the existing house, possibly even a slate roof or slate appearing roof, so it would match, you know, the house itself. And what that does, I mean, right now, it looks like there's about 25 feet between the corner of the kitchen expansion and where the garage rebuild would be, and that would cut it down to 21 feet, which still seems to have enough, you know, distance if that was approved. But again, the plan has been drawn with the 24-by-24 pad.
Yeah, Charlie, can I see what you, the drawing that you have? You modified it.
Sure. I mean, this one right here?
Yeah, where you just modified it. Because it's modified from the one behind.
Well, it isn't really. I mean, I could—
Well, I mean, just that little bit. That's what I meant.
It would be, you know, it would be—
That's what I was thinking.
Right, so it would be that.
Right, that's what I was thinking. Okay, that's fine.
Have any more questions, Marge?
No, I really don't have a problem with it. And there was a barn there many, many moons ago.
It was a garage, yeah.
So, and I know what you're saying about where the fence is, because former neighbor on Hillside, when they sold their house there many moons ago, moved in, and those two apartments looked right in with that house was, before you moved there. Yeah. So I'm very familiar with that, and I did appreciate the historic background narrative on it.
Interesting, yeah.
That helped a lot.
That too, that was good.
Very good, so.
Do you have any questions? I just want to make sure one thing. On the concrete pad, you're going to remove some of the old one that's over the property line that I read?
Well, I don't think we're talking about really removing that.
The garage would not go on that part?
It wouldn't go on that part, no.
Okay.
No. Yeah, it would, the garage would be—
On this side.
You know, two feet over from the existing property line.
Yeah.
So that, you know, if there was an overhang, which, you know, it would still not then be on the other property.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Fidelis?
No question. No questions.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Yeah?
Yes, Paul Richardson. I own the building right next to that concrete. I own the building next to the concrete pad there, and two questions. First question, are we going back 28 feet, or you said it was 24 by 24?
Right, I was, what I was talking about, Paul, was having, you know, possibly another four that way.
Oh, oh, oh.
To have the garage front, not toward your pad. Your pad would stay the same, yeah.
That's question one, so now I understand that. That existing fence that goes down through there.
Right.
Now, being built over that close and with a fence in the middle of it, do we have, you know, with fire department and things like that, people like that, emergency, have access down there, or would I have to take that fence down?
Well, I mean, access to the back, you know—
I'm talking right here.
Could come around the other way. I mean—
Right here, this side.
Yeah. I mean, we don't change the clearance, you know, between the fence and your existing apartment building, right?
The fence exists right now, correct?
Yes, it's there.
Right.
And your question is?
Access through here, right now, I've got the fence about eight feet. His building over here would be about another. But the fence, our fence, goes right down through the middle of it. Is that going to have to be, is that a problem with fire department or anything like that?
You'd have to ask them, but—
I mean, one of the things, Paul, is, if I could, just to explain, like, on this, what you're talking about here. In other words, right here, so the existing pad, you know, comes right over the fence, and it's like a three-foot drop. I mean, the pad—
I know, it drops right there.
Right, so in other, the pad is right here, existing right now, and so it drops off. So that isn't really an area where they have, you know, access to. I mean, certain, you know, you'd still have, you know, certainly this whole side here and here, you know, to go around with the garage there. I mean, you still have, you know, eight feet on your side and a little more than eight feet on our side.
Yeah, and the reason for the fence was to, when you come down the driveway, or those poles come down the driveway, the lights or your headlights don't flash into the apartment window, so.
Yeah, I think it's been a big improvement to have that fence. I actually had the approval from a previous owner to put that fence up, and since then, Paul has patented with me when we've had it rebuilt and repaired, you know, every, so many years we've had to have it repaired.
As long as we didn't have a problem with the fire department, I don't have to take that fence down.
Can I just, can I just say something? The fire department reviewed the plans and everything, and they never mentioned anything about access, so it must be fine with them.
And they did require, they're asking for a heat alarm in the garage.
Heat alarm in the garage.
A heat alarm in the garage. So if we build a garage, they're asking for a heat alarm, and that may be for that reason, so they'd be alarmed. So I got a strange signal.
Well, with the heat alarm in the garage, it would, it would communicate to the main house, to their living quarters, if there were any problem there.
Hi, one question, is you going to have water and electric in there, or?
Electric, probably not water, no.
I was going to say, you can ask your questions to us, and then we'll ask him. I know, it's friendly, but—
Yeah.
You have any more questions?
No, that's, no. That's one of the questions we usually ask, are you going to have electric and running water in there?
I think I will have electric, you know, for the lights.
Electric, cars, garage, door.
For the heat alarm, I guess that must be something.
It has to be, right.
But we don't have a plan on having any water or sewer.
Yeah.
Yeah, electric. All right. Any other comments or questions from us?
No comments.
No? Okay.
A motion to close the public hearing?
They'll move.
Discussion, any further discussion? Motion?
Okay. A motion to find pursuant to Article 15, Section 300/15.2A of the zoning bylaws to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing non-conforming use or structure for the property located at 26 Farquhar Road will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood because the neighborhood contains a variety of single-family homes with accessory structures. That's the fine.
That's it?
That's fine.
Does that include all of them? Are we doing it individually or all?
No, it's not. We don't need to—
All right, any discussion about the findings?
Diane.
No.
Do I identify what they were asking? I did, and the fine. And the fine, yes, so we don't have to do it in the special permit. Yeah, okay.
Do we have to vote on that?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes, the fine.
Before we can— We haven't had done this in a while. All those in favor—
Second, we need a second.
Of the motion for the find—
We need a second.
Huh?
We need a second.
Second.
I did second, didn't I?
Oh, okay.
You did, I did too.
You go for it, Fidelis.
All those in favor of the findings? Okay. We have to make another motion.
Yes. Yep. A motion to grant the special permit pursuant to Article 18, Section 300/18.2 (2) to the Blanchard Family Trust for the property located at 26 Farquhar Road to rebuild a garage on a portion of an existing concrete pad, according to the plans entitled "Special Permit Plans Proposed Garage," prepared by Sherman and Frye Druck. Plan date 18, sorry, plan date 12/8/2022, project number 22204.
We have a second?
Just a question. If it's accepted—
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm sorry, I just wanted to interrupt. The request at the hearing was 24 by 28, so it's not in accordance with the plans submitted, so if you're agreeable to that, the motion should change. Sorry to hop in.
To the revised dimensions of 24, 24 by 28.
Thank you.
And when you get it modified, there'll be a copy on file?
Right.
Okay, thank you. I'll second the proposal. Marge, second. I second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Unanimous?
Done it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Go ahead, and you can read the—
In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Center Office Building located at 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, Massachusetts 01566, on Wednesday, February 15th, 2023, at 6:45 PM, on the application of Shawn and Joanna Doyle. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Article 18, Section 300-18.2 (2) and a finding pursuant to Article 15, Section 300-15.2A of the zoning bylaw to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing non-conforming use or structure for the property located at 63 Beach Avenue. The applicant is proposing to construct an addition, raising of the structure by four feet, three inches within the existing foundation, and to relocate an existing carport and existing shed, as well as construct pervious paver walkways and patio as shown on the plans and documents provided. As proposed, the front setback will be reduced to 14.2 feet where 30 feet is required. No other non-conformities will be intensified as a result of the proposed alterations. The proposed request can be viewed at www.sturbridge.gov/zoningboardofappeals-pages/recentfindings or arrangements can be made to view the application packet by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at (508) 347-2508 or by email at jlacy@sturbridge.gov. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Members of the public may watch the meeting online via the town's on-demand video broadcast or via cable television on Channel 191. In the event of a remote hybrid meeting, notice shall be posted on the ZBA website, and those that wish to participate will find specific information on how to access the meeting on the website. Please note that the meeting/haring will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Elizabeth Banks, Chair, Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you.
May I, before we even begin, whether your abutment notices returned? We neglect to ask that of you of them. Thank you.
Okay, you can give it to you.
Okay, so for information, we have information from the town planner. The conservation commission, there has been an order of conditions issued. DPW added a utility card, so the contractor doesn't have any conflicts. The fire department has several questions about additional bedrooms, an additional living space, and it talks about new smoke alarms need to be hardwired with battery backup. And then the building department had no objections. So we can start with—
Have you received all the notices?
Please?
Have you received all the department notices?
I'm aware of them, yes.
Okay, now, I didn't know if there's a copy that you received.
Okay. Copy for me.
I heard something.
Okay.
I didn't know if you received them.
I emailed them, but I can print them out for you.
No, you have to give them my—
Okay.
Okay, I just want to make sure you got them.
Well, I guess I should also mention that. They request a special permit to construct an addition and the raising up of the structure by four feet, three inches within the existing foundation, and to relocate an existing carport and existing shed, as well as construct pervious paver walkways and patio.
Okay, what it actually is, is that we've got an existing foundation located at 63 Beach Ave. We have gone through the town meeting for conservation and got conservation approval on December 8th for the construction of the new addition onto the house, plus raising the house. What we're actually doing is we're taking the perimeter, which is on that one, the drawing to your right, and excavating around the foundation itself, which we're going to go approximately three feet beyond the foundation, remove the existing foundation and replace it with a new foundation, consequently raising the building roughly four foot, three inches. The property itself is that the deck and everything and the patio in the front of the building is changed slightly from the one to the left, where we took out the area on the northerly, north-westily corner of the property, removed that paving, pavers over there, and removed the shed. And then the rest of it is staying as is. Then on the south side of the property, we've taken off the stairwell and the deck off the building itself, and that counts for that. And then on the back, on the easterly side, we took where the shed was and moving it up in the front on the northeasternly corner of the building. And then on the southeastally corner, we've added a patio porch on that area. The carport itself, we've moved slightly to align it with the wall in the front, and then the walkways on the south side, we've modernized that, come up with new landscaping on that side, and a new walkway going into the front of the building on the Cedar Lake side.
I'm going to interrupt you for a minute. Do we have a laser pointer for—
I don't.
It conspicuously is absent.
I have one downstairs, I can go. I have one downstairs. If you want me to go get it.
Well, maybe you can go up and point to it.
You can, if you take a microphone with you.
What?
If you take a microphone with you, you can come up here.
Take it up and point to it.
Just don't talk too close to it.
Okay, what I, what I can do is, would you want to reiterate everything or just—
No, continue from where you are, and then we'll ask questions.
Okay, what we did is we actually took this section right in here, area, we've landscaped this section in here, and we put the walkway going in from here, right out here to the back of the property itself.
And those are all paved, too?
Those are pervious pavers, yes. Yep.
Good.
And then the, this piece right over here, we've actually taken out this section here, removed this building, took that building and brought it right here to this corner, which is right here on this side, and then put a porch on this, and then put a new set of stairs going in from the parking area to right in here. The landscaping on the thing, basically what you see is right in here. We have two trees here that were with the conservation, which are very close to the building itself, and there is a provision within the conservation that in the event that— that that had been destroyed during construction, it'd have to be replaced.
With the same type of trees?
The same type of deciduous trees.
Yeah, because they look that way.
So, so the thing is, it's, the property itself is serviced by an E1 pump, which is Town Sewer. The well itself is basically on the south side of the property. What we had to do is take an easement over here, which was 10-foot wide out to the road itself, which is on this guy's property here. That's recorded at the Registry of Deeds to use to service the well in the event anything goes wrong with the well. The building itself, we're staying exactly within the same footprint. This area will be not changed. There'll be two piers that'll be brought in here into to support the upper section of this area here, which is basically their dining room. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
How many existing piers are there now?
There's two.
And that's going to be the same?
The same thing. There's basically one here and one there.
That's enough?
That's it, yep.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to see one existing shed is being removed. That makes it a little more compliant.
Well, there's two things that, right, there's two things that are actually being removed. This, this deck here and stairs is being removed, and this shed's being removed. Okay, if you, if you actually...
Yeah, there's a reduction I see in the overall...
We have a slight reduction in the overall.
Yes, I see that.
Right.
24 square feet.
Right, but it's a reduction.
It's a reduction. Everything is good.
Any more questions, Marge?
No, I'm glad to see all of the pervious pavers there, and I'm sure Conservation was very happy to see that. And I really, there again, looks like it's been well reviewed. I'm happy about that.
Anything else?
I have some questions. The carport, is it going to be the same carport that's there now?
Yes.
And you're just, what, shifting it?
Just shifting it to be, to be in line with the wall that's out in the back there. It's right now, it's at a slight angle. It's just going to, just changing. It's not going to change that much.
All right, and then, that part is higher than where the house is.
That is correct.
So there's going to, the steps down and all that, and then the addition is right there?
Right. This area right in here, where the...
Right.
Where the, this cup, or this right here, this is a set of stairs that is going down here, onto the patio here. This is actually a planted area in here, and stepping down to there.
All right, so I saw where the driveway was, because I went, I went and checked out the, right. My only other comment is that since it is double the lot coverage percentage...
No.
No.
No, no, on the contrary.
No, no, not the way it is now, I mean, it's...
No, let's, let's make that ethically clear. What's actually taking place is that the coverage on that existing lot versus this, with this addition over here, we're actually having 24 square feet less.
I, right, I, I...
However, you used coverage, I think you meant intensity, okay? And now what we're doing is we're raising the basement area 4 foot 3 inches.
Right.
We're just going to make that a habitable area. Okay, so you're actually doubling the area of the building as far as the usage between the first and second floor.
Right, so my next comment was being...
That was also addressed at the Conservation Commission, too.
The shed that's up near the street, if that could be removed, that would be even more reduction in lot coverage.
I know, but staying, no, but it's staying where it is. That's not moving. That's staying.
All right. Do you have any questions, Bedellis?
No, I think it looks pretty neat. You know, going from what you, what you have before to what you're proposing, it looks quite tidy, so. No questions.
Yeah, no questions as well, just saw that you were reducing it by 24 square feet, so. It's all right.
Okay. Oh, any questions from the audience? Anybody, any, you have any more?
No.
Okay.
Oh, yes, mine.
I just have, I do have one more. So the house isn't being torn down at all? You're just raising the...
We're actually, we're taking the existing foundation.
Right.
Removing that, but we're actually going to jack up the house.
Okay.
Okay, put in a new foundation, put, set it back on the foundation, okay?
Yeah.
The, the, there's a couple alterations for beams within the house, but the floor itself will not change.
Yeah, we had a couple like that several years ago on the same situation, so they can utilize the underpart more.
You had, you also had the building plans that is part of your packet, if you have any questions in it, that shows you that the floor plans and the elevations haven't changed.
Okay. Ready?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Can somebody second that?
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay.
A motion to find pursuant to Article 15, Section 300 hyphen 15.2A of the zoning bylaws to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing nonconforming use or structure for the property located at 63 Beach Avenue will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood because the increase is not significant and is very consistent with the neighborhood.
Do we, so there's the motion. Do we have a second?
Diane, I'd like to add on the bottom knot that all necessary permits, necessary permits must be obtained and all concerns addressed prior to construction.
Would that be in the second?
In the special permit part.
Right, but...
Yes, I'd like that. No, I know, this is the finding. I'd like that in the second part, because we didn't put that in another one. Thank you.
All, all right, motion, second. All those in favor? Okay.
Look forward.
No, we didn't do the...
Now, I know, you still have to do it.
Do you want to do it?
No, you can do it. You're doing a good job.
Motion to grant the special, motion to plant the, to grant the special permit pursuant to Article 18, Section 300 hyphen 18.2, parentheses, 2, to Shawn and Joanna Doyle for the property located at 63 Beach Avenue to construct, to construct an addition raising of the structure by 4 feet 3 inches within the existing foundation and to relocate an existing carport and existing shed, as well as, as well, as well as construct pervious paved walkways and patio according to the plans entitled Site Plan for Shawn and Joanna Doyle Prepared by Jelbit Engineering, planned date 10/11/2022, DWG number 22035, revision number 1 dated 11/29/2022, and architectural plans entitled Doyle Residence Prepared by Architectural Insights, planned date 7/22/2022, project number 22 hyphen 05, and all other permits that are subject beforehand construction.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll throw a second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Okay, it's your name.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
It's still going to be around for others, aren't you? What are you going to do with all your money? What are you going to do with all the money?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. You want me to give you the... Give you the question.
No questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. Yes, next is a public hearing for a special permit for 72, 72A Paradise Lane, Lisa and Robert Mascaro.
Okay, want me to read it or do you want to read it?
Do you want to read it? Go ahead.
I just thought I'd give you a, your throat a break. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Center Office Building, located at 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass., 01566, on Wednesday, February 15, 2023, at 6:55 PM, on the application of Robert M. and Lisa A. Mascaro. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Article 18, Section 300-18.2, and the finding pursuant to Article 15, Section 300-15.2A of the zoning bylaws to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing nonconforming use or structure for the property located at 72 and 72A Paradise Lane. The applicant is proposing to raise and rebuild an existing single-family home with related site improvements, as shown on the plans and documents provided. As proposed, the front setback will be reduced to 24 feet, 24.8 feet where 30 feet is required. No other nonconformities will be intensified as a result of the proposed alterations. The proposed request can be viewed at https://www.sturbridge.gov/zoningboardofappeals/pages/recentfilings or arrangements can be made to review the application packet by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Board at (508) 347-2508, or by email at jlacy@sturbridge.gov. Any person interested, interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Members of the public may watch the meeting online via the town's on-demand video broadcast or via cable retail, cable television on Channel 191. In the event of a remote hybrid meeting, notice shall be posted on the ZBA website, and those that wish to participate in the meeting, how to access the meeting and how to access the meeting on the website. Please note that the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law.
All right, thank you.
And Elizabeth Banks, Chair, Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We received information from the Jean Bubon, the town planner, the conservation. They have, they issued an order of condition. DPW had no comments. The fire department is wanting to ensure that all propane or oil tanks and lines are kept safe from damage during demolition. There is, in regards to the new single-family home, the fire resistant ratings and insulation requirements of all materials must reflect the regulation and requirements of the Mass. Building Code. Carbon monoxide alarms must reflect the most recent requirements of Mass. General Law. They wanted the applicant to consider a home sprinkler system. And the new, so the building department, new energy code effective January 1, 2022 needs to be looked at before ripping old house. A bit complicated on lake property to me. I strongly suggest having your HERS reader look at ahead of this meeting, and I don't, not sure what that means.
I don't know what that is.
A HERS rating.
You know what's the HERS?
All right.
Yeah, it's energy efficient.
What is it?
It's basically a blow test to make sure your house is energy efficient.
Oh, okay.
Lower door test, that's what they do with all new builds.
She does, yeah.
And from the board of health, that there's an extra well on the site, and the well will need to be decommissioned by a licensed well company and provide proof of said decomposition, and the applicant and permits can be obtained through the health department. So. You can make your presentation.
Okay, Leonard Jelbit, from Jelbit Engineering, representing Mr. Mascaro and his wife on the property located on 62, 72 and 72A Paradise Lane. The order of conditions for conservation was issued on December 8th. And from that, I'll go, I'll go that way and point everything out to the building itself. Okay, what has actually taken place is that there is roughly 0.5 square, square foot difference in the existing house versus the proposed house. However, the, the coverage on the property is still going to be 14.63%, which is under the required 15% as per zoning. The property itself, as you can see, is that there's a lot of X's and everything, the trees and tree pruning here, which we went through a very extensive, exhausting meetings with Conservation to get this thing approved. It actually...
Remember.
It actually took six meetings to go through to get it done. I wish there was an easier way of getting it done, but it wasn't possible, apparently. The areas where the tree and the shrubbery are being done was done through the auspices of Thomas Chamberlain, who was a licensed arborist. He came through with a comprehensive report showing all the trees, the status of the trees, and the methods of removal or restoring the trees themselves, which was approved by Conservation. The house itself, as you look right here, is this one right here, and that's very close to the 25-foot line. What it is with Conservation, they didn't want the house that close, they wanted the house to be further from the lake, which we moved it from 25, we moved it back here, nine feet further away from the lake itself, and shifted the house actually in this direction here to allow for a better setback from the lake itself. Also, there's a concrete pad, which is over here in the water, which left that alone and took that area there, over here, 25 feet from that shoreline, that would be understood and untouched, which was part of the Conservation. Prior to any construction work on the house itself and tree removal and everything, we're going to have to go through a site meeting with the contractor and the Conservation Commission to get approval for construction. The, the house itself is serviced by Town Sewer and a private well. and a private well. And the drainage on the property is basically by cul-de-sac chambers on the sides, and then have a drip chamber here, cul-de-sac chambers there for drainage. The house itself is actually a two-story dwelling, which is being placed approximately right here, from here to here, to the street itself. So we put it back as far as we possibly could, or as close as we possibly could to the street itself to allow for vehicles to be parked in here. And what we actually are doing is we've got two spaces here, one space here for a vehicle, and two more spaces over here, three more spaces over here. So we've got five, six spaces, and two in the garage. We actually have parking for six vehicles on the site itself. The building itself is staying height-wise and everything, is staying within the regulations. It's gonna be a new foundation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So. I can start at that end.
Yeah, so it's taking over the existing footprint, basically, same square footage, is what you said, correct?
Correct.
Like a foot or more? Other than that, it's basically the same square footage that currently is there?
Right, right.
So, I'm looking at the site plan, and the house has been moved, the proposed construction is being moved, you said about how many feet from the lake? But I see that the side facing the driveway.
The existing house right now is actually 25 feet from the lake itself.
Yep.
25.6, to be exact.
You're pushing that back.
Right now, what we're doing is to take the limits of the house over there, we're going to 34.4. So roughly nine feet more, roughly.
So you're getting some space there, but then you're losing some at the...
Well, up on the top here, we've gone, we've actually moved the house a little bit closer to the road itself, but we have the sufficient parking for the cars, so we don't have to worry about it.
And you've been within all of the... You've been within that 15-foot setback yet, so operate.
As far as the setbacks and everything goes, they all stand within the zoning. The zoning, the way it reads right now, it's gotta be 15 feet in this side here, and this side here, and then 25, I think you got over there. And then this one here, the house is going a little bit into the road area itself.
It's staying within the 15.
Correct, we're staying, we're staying, there's no side distance, it's staying where it is.
Centimeter coverage here within it. Not increasing, is what I'm saying.
No, we're not increasing, we're not asking for any variances or anything.
Are you moving the shed?
Please.
The shed?
The shed itself, yes, that will be removed.
Okay.
Removed or relocated?
I don't know, you're gonna relocate? No, removed.
Yeah, it says it in the thing. All right. It's always more favorable when you try to bring it more into conformity, or reduce the nonconformity.
No more questions.
All right, so my question is, is like a three and a half to four feet drop between like the driveway and the house now? Is that gonna remain that way?
We're actually...
Is there like a stone wall?
Yeah, it's staying there right now. What's happening is that the house is being raised slightly, where the garage area right in here will be at grade. This here is at grade, this floor is basically at grade. It's actually six inches higher.
So you're gonna raise the grade?
Raise the house up, right.
Even to the drive, that parking area?
Correct, yep.
Okay. And so that, and also the gas, that propane gas tank?
The propane tank itself basically is located over here on this side of the property, and we're taking it and putting it over here on that side, which is right in here.
Okay.
Taking away more from where the trees are.
The trees are all going down.
They're going down.
Right.
Yeah, where they were.
I think that's all the questions that I had. Do you have any questions?
No, I'm asked that.
Do you have any more questions?
No.
Anybody from the audience have any questions? Okay, motion?
Today must be a lucky day.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Somebody want to second?
I second.
Fidelis, second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay.
A motion to find pursuant to Article 15, Section 300 hyphen 15.2A of the zoning bylaws to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing nonconforming use or structure for the property located at 72/72A Paradise Lane will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood because all the lot sizes in the vicinity of the property are all small and contain single-family homes and accessory structures similar in size and character to the proposed by the applicant.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any comments? All those in favor? Okay.
Okay. Motion to grant the special permit pursuant to Article 18, Section 300 hyphen 18.2, parentheses 2, to Robert and Lisa Muscaro for the property located at 72/72A Paradise Lane to raise and rebuild an existing single-family home with related site improvements according to the plans entitled "Site Plan" for Robert and Lisa Muscaro, prepared by Jelbit Engineering, Plan Date 4/7/22, D W G number 21098, Revision Number 4, dated 10/27/22, and the architectural plans that were submitted. We have no name on the architectural plans, so. And all other permits given before construction.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Good luck.
After, yeah?
Thanks.
Next, we have a public hearing for a special permit for 88 South Shore Drive for Stephen and Marcy Reed. Doesn't matter to me.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Center Office Building located at 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566 on Wednesday, February 15, 2023, excuse me, at 7:05 PM on the application of Stephen B. and Marcy I Reed. And the applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Article 18, Section 300-18.2, subsection 2, and a finding pursuant to Article 15, Section 300-15.2A of the zoning bylaws to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing nonconforming use or structure for the property located at 88 South Shore Drive. The applicant is proposing to renovate the existing cottage and add, in addition, to allow for a one-story home and an attached garage, as shown on the plans and documents provided. As proposed, the coverage will increase to 16.8%, where 15% is allowed. No other nonconformities will be intensified as a result of the proposed alterations. The proposed request can be viewed on and can be made to view the application packet by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Board at 508-347-2508, or by email at jlacy@sturbridge.gov. Any persons interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Members of the public may watch the meeting online via the town's on-demand video broadcast, or via cable television on Channel 191. In the event of a remote hybrid meeting, notice shall be posted on the ZBA's website, and those that wish to participate will find specific information on how to access the meeting on the website. Please note that the meeting or hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast, unless otherwise required by law. Elizabeth Banks, Chair, Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Marge.
You're welcome.
Before, I have one question before we start. This is a special permit to allow the demolition of the existing home?
No.
Because that's what's, it's mentioned that in several places, and I wanna... So it's, you're not demolishing the home and rebuilding it?
She changed her mind, right.
What?
They changed their mind. What they're going to do is...
Expand, change.
Can I explain?
Yeah.
Let me explain that before we start.
Okay.
What it is is this...
Microphone.
Is the, is the house itself basically is a single-story summer home, which is right here on the property itself. Going through conservation and getting everything done, they deemed that we'd rather utilize the existing single-story structure right here and put the addition on, which we're putting on right here. And this addition in here with this, but we're actually going with a two-story structure of the garage in this area here on that footprint that you see right there, which is a 16.8. Did you get that?
So it's an expansion?
Liz, did you see that? Liz?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I did. Thank you.
To expand and... Ban and...
Okay, well, actually, what they're actually doing is they're taking, which was in the family, is they're taking, they're taking a family home, which was here, and they're gonna make it a year-round residence. So that's what they're doing.
Ban, change and all.
Okay, what actually took place here is we went through conservation for approval, and on December 8, it was approved. We've got the septic system going here in the front of the property itself, and we have a new well going in to the property in the back, so. The area itself, we're removing one tree here and a couple here on the side, and there's only three trees on the site that's gonna be removed. The rest of this is staying the same. And the house itself will be, the setback right here is staying the same. So the, and the addition of the house itself is staying within the actual setbacks.
So it's major, renovation major?
Please?
It's more of a major renovation?
It's, well, it's major. It's going from, it's going from a seasonal cottage to a year-round home.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Just, you're right.
Okay, thanks. We did hear, we have information from Jeanne Bouvan, town planner, and also from the DPW, and they talked about the demolition, so that's not gonna happen. Just trying to... Same thing, the fire department wants the fire-resistant ratings and installation equipment on all materials that must reflect the regulations and requirements of Mass Building Code, carbon monoxide alarms. Building doesn't affect special permit, strongly suggests they look at new energy code regs taking effect January 1, 2023. It will have a large effect on rebuild should have their architect looked over new home plans with that in mind. Many variables and like of, it's complicated. Conservation, the project has been approved, and they have a permit. And they mentioned that they're not gonna raise the building, so. Anyways, now you can make... Did you do your, do you want to say anything else about it?
That's it, unless anyone has any questions, yes.
Legal, legal notice and the certificate of mailing?
I got them.
Oh, yeah? And for the other one?
I have them all for everything.
Thanks.
And it is in rural residential?
Please?
It's in rural residential?
Yes.
Okay.
What's the difference in square footage from the existing now to the...
500, it's basic, it's about 100, little over 100, 100 square feet difference.
Looks much different, that's what I was asking, okay.
Any more questions, Tom?
No, I'm not ready to second.
Any questions for Delis, right?
You're adding an extra floor, right?
Please?
You're adding an extra floor.
There's a second story, yes.
Second story. Because you said he wasn't gonna raise, so.
It's, if the...
Yes, but they also talked about demolishing it.
The building plans are in your back there.
Confusing.
There are two levels, one...
So, so, so it's gonna be a two-story house?
The end result will be two.
Two stories, okay.
And a basement? Two stories and a basement?
With an attached garage, yeah.
Well, the basement is actually a garage.
Yeah.
Two stories with a garage underneath.
Is that the front view, this one?
Yeah.
I guess I have another question, because the legal notice says it's an attached garage.
Well, it's attached. It's an integral part of the... It's, well, it's an integral part of the building, but it's a, it is attached, but what's happening here is, okay, is, is the original house right here, and here's the garage, and the garage is actually attached.
Okay. It's under, though.
Well, it's under, it's up here, yes.
But above the garage is the house.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, there's a shed that's to be removed.
What is that?
Shed to be removed here.
Oh, yeah, that's a shed, yeah, that's a shed right near the, that shed right there is right near the other street.
All right, so that's getting removed. Yeah. Okay. And...
Where's this right now, 88?
What, you have two wells on it?
That was the other property.
What?
Oh, no, no.
No, that was, that wasn't, that was another project. This, this, this well is for the butter piece and everything, okay?
Right, sorry, yeah, see that now. Okay.
Okay.
Any more, do you have any question?
I have another question. So this says 88 South Shore Drive, and then on this article, it says 84 South Shore Drive.
It actually is both.
Both, okay.
Okay, what it, what it is, if you, if you look at it, okay, this, this line, this line right here is the dividing line between the two lots, 88 and 84.
They own both lots.
Okay, so it's the same thing.
Those two lots.
Right.
All right, that's why I asked about the...
No, they, they made it as an, it's now being assessed as 88. That's why we used it, 88, because 88 is assessed with the two lots and it combined.
All right, that's where I was getting confused with the wells and that. All right.
Now, that, that well over here is on a different lot, though.
Yes, I see that. So there's an existing well here, and this is a different one.
There's, there's one over here, there's a well on this side, well on that side.
Yeah, okay. Because I was looking in the middle, there's an existing...
Wait, that well's not on the property.
What?
It's not.
This existing well is not on their property.
No, there's one in the middle of the property.
No, but there's, the other lots have wells on them, you know?
Their lot is more closer to the proposed square.
Correct. If you look at, okay, if you look at that, there's a, there was a well over here, there's a well over here, there's a well right there, and a well right here. There's one, that's on another lot.
Well here, here.
And that's on another, and that, this one here is on this one.
Which is the well for this place?
That one right there.
This one?
Yep. And then there's one for this lot, and then there's one for that lot.
Yeah, it's like...
Very brand new.
When you look at it, it looks like they're all conflicted, but...
Yeah, what happens, okay, what actually happens here is when you, when you draw these plans, you're coming, you're coming in here now with a septic system, which is the Board of Health, and you have to show all the wells within 100 feet of septic system. That's why you're seeing the wells on the other lots.
Well, that's why I asked, because of the positioning of them.
Correct, but they have to be shown by the Board of Health.
All right. Things are getting more complicated. Hey, why fix what's not broken?
Oh, there's no town sewer down there.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, there's nobody across the street to block the view of the lake, so...
There are a lot of polywogs down there in the spring.
And that's a pretty fairly large lot.
Right.
Yeah.
This, this...
I went by there yesterday.
This lot here is actually double, a double lot, okay? And then the, the area on the opposite side, there's the lake over here, but this side here is a big wetland area.
Yeah.
And it goes around the side, it goes into a brook that feeds into the lake.
Yeah, most of the lake areas are in rural residential, that's what throws you off.
Right.
Anybody have any more questions?
I'm good.
Anybody in the audience?
Don't have any audience, so, look, there's anybody virtually? Anybody virtually?
You want to make a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Somebody second it?
I second it.
Okay, all those in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay.
Motion to fine pursuant to Article 15, Section 300 hyphen 15.2A of the zoning bylaws to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing nonconforming use or structure for the property located at 88 South Shore, South Shore Drive will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood because the increase is not significant and is very consistent with the neighborhood.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Excuse me, who seconded?
Tom.
Tom, thank you.
All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Okay. Motion to grant the special permit pursuant to Article 18, Section 300 hyphen 18.2 (2) to Stephen and Marcy Reed for the property located at 88 South Shore Drive to renovate the existing cottage and add, in addition, to allow for a two-story home and garage underneath according to the plans entitled "Proposed Site Plan" for Stephen B. and Reed and Mary L. Reed prepared by Gilbert Engineering, Plan Date 2/17/22, DWG number 21046, Revision Number 6, dated 10/18/22, and Architectural Plans, SK-5, Reed Residence, date 10/5/22.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Unanimous.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Enjoy your new place.
All right, next we have a determination for 88 Magogale Road, James and Darlene Yeznitsky. I don't want to say that right. Requesting a determination to raise the roof by four feet and add a 15-foot-by-six-inch-by-24 dormers to the front and rear of the roof and install piers under existing cottage. We have, let me see.
Looks like Jean got blown out, she can't get back in, so she's gone.
Hey, I heard a boop out.
Those people probably said enough of it.
Do I have something from the town planner? I don't see it.
No, so this came in after Jean went out on leave, so I did check with her to make sure that it was good for a determination. She said that this was good for a determination, so...
So we have information from the, DPW has no comment. The building department inspector has no objections to the project. They're going to need more detailed plans to issue a permit. Conservation, you have filed with conservation for the project and some additional site improvements, and the proposed project from the, this is from the fire department, doesn't add any livable space, so there are no fire code concerns at this time. And, let's see, you may make your presentation.
Don't look at me. So it's, it's, we're keeping the exact existing footprint, and we're just putting dormers up on the second floor. There you go. Yeah, you can see the dormer there.
Yeah.
And basically, initially, we weren't going to raise the roof at all, but we found when we put these dormers on, that when you came out to the front of the dormers there, where the windows are, you only had five foot of floor-to-ceiling height, so that was very uncomfortable. So the only way to get around it was to raise it four feet higher than the existing roof. So that's where this plan came up. Yeah, it's a 1940s cottage, it's currently sitting on cinder blocks on the, there's 12 piers under there now, 12 piles of cinder blocks.
And bricks.
Yeah, and...
By fours.
Basically, we're going to basically put everything in by code, piers, I think all total, there's like 33 piers that we're putting in.
Wow.
Yeah, so it's all going to be done, you know, by code, four-foot frost line, so...
Yeah, it's going to be a lot more safe.
Yeah. And you have pictures, I think, actual pictures of the old cottage. This is, this is going to be a big improvement.
Definitely.
It currently looks pretty scary. We bought it in 2015, and to date, we haven't been able to stay there one night because it's in pretty rough shape. So we're finally getting it fixed up, cleaned up.
Again, it's another, one acre lot. I mean, the area.
It's got, it's a nice-sized lot. It's almost like, it's close to a, it feels like it's close to a double lot compared to everything else in the neighborhood.
Okay.
It's, it's zone, rural residential, it's private, we don't usually see the same.
Any questions, Tom?
Is the building that's to the right of that, is that staying there currently?
Yeah, there's two sheds on the property that are staying there.
Okay.
And they are existing.
And then the front, you show a picture of that being, is that the, where the water is? Is this basically walkout to the water?
Yeah, that's, that's, taken from the water.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
And everything is the same. The deck is there, that's staying the same. I mean, nothing, nothing at all is changing.
Looks like you're just making it safer.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And expanding it and making it...
Yeah, I mean, the one thing that is not shown is the stairs that are...
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah, the deck is all the way around it.
I think there's probably something in there, yeah.
There's, there's two sets of stairs.
Yeah.
Will any of the piers down in the bottom of those be, will that just stay open all the time, or will there be any enclosures around?
Probably going to do a lattice enclosure there.
Get some critters down there, that would be good.
The, the main body of the house is actually going to be closed in completely.
Yeah, because there's, there's a stone, there's like 1940s stacked stone underneath it right now that is just deteriorating, the concrete's falling apart. That cold snap we had Saturday, we went back on Sunday, we had three more feet that kind of underneath the porch on the right side just kind of fell.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the existing building, like you said, looks to be in pretty rough shape.
Mm-hmm.
So beyond adding the dormer, I think you're going to renovate everything, right?
Yeah, so for us to do this job, currently, this section right here is six inches lower than the rest of the cottage, so literally, we're going to tear this off, and we're going to, when we do the renovations, and this is going to get raised up so that the floor across the entire cottage is the same level. So, yeah, so this is completely coming off and being rebuilt new, technically, this is all new. And then on the backside, there's an existing bathroom that is going to come off. We have to take those off, just like we have to take this off in order to get to all the piers, to be able to replace them all. There's only, the way we're doing it, there's only three piers that we're going to have to actually get in underneath the cottage and dig by hand to put those in. Other than that, everything else can be done with a small Kubota tractor.
We looked, like, three, four years ago, we actually looked at raising the cottage and putting a, and it was just cost prohibitive for us.
Yeah, is that the neighborhood fox I see there?
Yes, neighborhood coyote.
Is that a coyote?
His job is to keep the geese away.
The geese away.
That's a good job. Yeah, no more questions?
All set? I don't really have any questions.
No, I'm all set.
You're all set?
I'm all set.
Marge, do you have any questions?
I'm good with it.
Okay. You going to make a motion?
Nobody else wants to?
You go ahead.
Okay.
Good, you're doing a good job. Go ahead.
Thanks. A motion to grant the determination to James and Darlene Yeninsky for the property located at 88 Magogale Road to raise the existing roof by four feet and to add a 15 by six, 15 feet by six inches by 24 feet dormers to the front and rear of the roof and to install piers under the existing cottage as shown on the plans entitled "Plot Plan," prepared for James and Darlene Yeninsky, prepared by Levec Geomet, Geometrics, Inc., Plan Date March 6, 2020, Job Number JY01-001, Revision 2, Dated 12/10/2022, and Architectural Plans entitled "Jim and Darlene Yeninsky, Prepared by McCann Architectural Drafting, Plan Date 2/1/23. The proposal does not intensify the existing or create additional nonconformities, and the applicant may apply for a building permit for the prescribed activities."
A second? You ever want a second there?
Oh, four. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Hey, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you, thank you for all your time.
You're fun.
Of Maya Popolski.
Cheers. Cheers.
I'm Slava.
Go Brian.
Go Brian.
Okay, there a town planner update?
Next meeting is March 15, if we have any...
So far, nothing?
So far, nothing.
Okay.
But I will people updated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have old business?
Nope.
New business?
Nope.
Anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Someone second?
Second.
Mine is all second.
Time noted, 8 o'clock, new clock.
Thank you. 8 o'clock on the dot.
I know, that's good.
It's been a while since we had...